For the U.S. Department.
Yeah. Yeah, because Hank was on me. Did we make you, hey, open to meetings? I've got seven dozen meetings. I hear the same thing every time, so.
Yeah, I can add this.
Okay, let's call them in to order. It's Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all diversity, fair trade, and justice for all.
Morning up.
Uh, met some reports received and filed?
None.
Okay, Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
I've got admin meeting lunching with directors on my calendar. We doing that today?
Yes.
All right, lunch.
Okay.
So we gotta be done by 11:30. I'm gonna speed this up. Christmas committee meeting tomorrow morning at nine. I probably won't make that. Leadership on Friday. MSP CP meeting, 8:30 Friday. And then I'm gonna meet with Carlos Graham about that Link University. There's some signage that we can put on the state routes recognizing the university. I think that's about all I got coming up.
Leadership's gonna be canceled Friday because there's that MSP meeting at 8:30.
Okay. Sleep in?
Well, come to the MSP meeting.
Oh, I'll be there. I can do both. I've done before. Show up late and leave early.
Okay.
I'm not gonna say who else does that. All right, keep moving.
RPC Annual Dinner is tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at the Playsville Store. Driven cutting, open house for the Health Department at 4 o'clock on Thursday.
Forgot that one. Sorry, Kristi.
And that's all.
They do have a Piccadilly thing for the SOMO. It's Thursday night, too. Is that a ladies only thing or whatever? And me?
I think it's ladies at the table that the men are serving, but I don't know. How are you sitting at the table?
They didn't tell me that part. Come out, we're having fundraiser dinner, so.
Uh, I got CAP Region Building Committee meeting at 7:00 in the morning tomorrow. I won't make your, your MRPC dinner.
Yeah.
Thursday morning, I got a chamber meeting at 7:30, Health Department. There's also a Knights Columbus Chicken Dinner Thursday night for, uh, Boys and Girls Club. Friday, CAP Region Outreach meeting at 7:30, MSP meeting at 8:30. Saturday, you can put on your costume, come trick-or-treating downtown.
What is it?
Jim Dyke's been working on it. Come trick-or-treat.
That's more dangerous than youth hunt this weekend.
Yeah. And then Monday, there's a Juvenile Court Advisory Board meeting at noon, so I don't know if I'll make that, but I will try.
You won't go hunting this weekend? You can be the world's oldest youth.
Depends on what the weather's like. Okay, let's keep moving on. Appointments by Commission, Port Authority Board Appointments. We met last week and, and, uh, the Cole County has three members, Jefferson City has three members, Callaway County has three members. So, uh, Calvin Broton, Colonel Calvin Broton has agreed to serve. Gary Wheeler with Missouri Soybean has agreed to serve. And then we need one from, uh, the Commission and, uh, Chris is gonna be our representative there, but Jeff and I are gonna probably attend a lot of those meetings, too, just as guests.
Yeah, and if Chris can't make it, then we can be those designees or else, uh, if we find out when the meeting's gonna be regularly scheduled, if there's conflicts or something, we can change it, but for now, we'll just, Chris is gonna be on there, so. I make a motion, we appoint Calvin Broton, Gary Wheeler, and Chris Shepley to the Port Authority Board.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, Commission comments, unfinished business. Any unfinished business, Debbie? Okay. Counts payable review?
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable. And Chris, you have one?
Okay.
Heading review.
I'm gonna go back up to the liaison to reports. Uh, we had Campo last week and didn't do a whole lot. We added some performance measures to the Campo, uh, documents which were required by MoDOT, which were required by the feds. They don't really do anything. We don't get punished if we don't meet them. I think they're just some performance measures to start with, and they probably will change over time. But on another note, they do have a, uh, the Campo 2045, she spoke about it, Katrina did last week, but if you get a chance, go to the campo2045.com and there's a survey and take survey about stuff you'd like to have included on the long-term plan, so we'd just wanna, we'd like to get as much participation as possible with that. So if there's some stuff you want to include, we can talk about that amongst ourselves as well, but anybody's welcome. We'll take that survey and, you know, you don't have to live inside the city limits. Campo encompasses a lot of, uh, this area, so. All right, that's all I got.
Okay. Can LV do it, too?
Uh, I don't know if there's any pictures or not. We can read them. Sam started that.
Okay.
Is that something maybe you want on the website or the county website?
Yeah, we can do that. I'll make a note.
Talk to Melissa or something?
We can put it on the, uh, Facebook website, just have it linked to them.
Did we load on the accounts?
No.
Okay.
Um, so one of the things that we had talked about was that High Street Bidiuct, and I noticed that it wasn't on the Campo's list. Is that not something that they get involved with or?
I'd have to check and see where that's at.
Do you happen to know, Larry, or?
It'd be in Campo, it'd be on one R2 or R2 or two, it'd be on the program, so yes, it could be working.
We had that on the half-cent long-term sales, or half-cent sales tax long-term.
Right.
Plan, not this one or maybe not even the next one, but, and I thought we were talking about replacing it completely. Uh, I'm in a discussion with somebody else the other day, and he showed me some pictures, and then we drove underneath of it. I won't drive underneath of it anymore. It's kinda scary. It's getting.
It depends on where I do the survey on that back in '79 and '80, so.
So it's in poor but usable condition, that's what. Uh, I guess we probably need to talk about that through Campo, too, then they don't, I don't think we have any money there, so. Even, but being on the list, I guess, brings it on the radar.
So, so how do they, I mean, so you said that there's no money there, so how do they put projects on the list when they don't have any money to fund them? It's projects that they try to work through MoDOT to get funded, or?
If money comes around, gets freed up, or if projects don't get done, sometimes you have other MPOs that don't get their projects done or whatever that we can get. Um, or, you know, this sales tax, if it comes through, then that would definitely have an effect on the 2045 plan, so.
Yes, as well as property, you know, there's additional funds there, so.
But though, like Campo does get funding somehow. Right.
They get funding as far as, uh, not project-wise necessarily, it's the numbers of the Campo gets funding. Like, we come in and we have a Bureau project that's within the Campo boundaries, that's how it's funded as far as project-wise, or, you know, there's projects we've done that have some sales tax that's been included within urbanized areas.
Okay.
It's, I mean, it's a planning organization, so it just tries to kinda help with.
They're not a doer, they're, like I said, a long-range plan.
I would think High Street Bidiuct would definitely need to be on there.
I think originally it was, it was, there was one there that was wood, and, uh, so this, this replaced the wooden one, but I don't know when that was. It looks old.
Okay.
I mean, we can take a look at our long-term plan, too. There were some things that were in there 10 years ago that we may either need to add or remove. Um, I know Melissa Extension, we've talked about that at different times, and, you know, if that's gonna be something we're gonna look at in long-term, that's gonna be a big project and probably needs to be, uh, probably eating one bite at a time, too, because I don't know if it's gonna be something that can get done at one time with, you know, funding. Not from our pockets, anyway, I don't know.
We'll get that back on the agenda and have a discussion on that, just kinda look at projects that maybe were in our sales tax. Wildwood Extension comes to mind, uh, so.
Okay.
Anyway.
Yeah, I'll shoot an email out, too, and we can kick some items around and.
Maybe get Public Works here.
I hate to have close, close that bridge like they.
Yep. Okay.
Okay. Did we do the accounts payable review?
I have one in there, so.
Oh, okay.
Uh, make a motion to approve accounts payable upon review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay. Kristen asked if we move the budget discussion down towards the end, so we will do the public defender office space next.
Is that here?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Justin Carver. I'm the district defender here in, uh, the public defender's office. We serve Cole County, Miller County, and Monatah Counties, and, um, wanted to come meet with you all to talk with you about our existing office space situation. We love the building that we're in, we love the location, we love being able to walk to court and walk to jail, and also, our local courts here are in the habit of, you know, when someone shows up at the court and they need a public defender, uh, the judge will tell them, hey, just walk across the alley to the public defender's office after court filled out an application. So the location is great, you know, the problem is that the space that we're in, uh, was, was really designed, uh, to house about nine employees. We've got seven offices, we've got two workstations, and at the time that we moved into the existing space, we had one break, uh, break room, conference room, uh, type of room. So, so we were, the space designed for nine people. Uh, now we've got 13 people working in that same space. To make room for everybody, uh, we took that break room, that conference room, and we turned that into an attorney office. Um, when, uh, we were allotted an additional per, person, we had to find a place to, to put them, so we took a, effectively what was a storage nook that had filing cabinets and stuff in it. We moved the filing cabinets out, we put up a, uh, like a partition, and we turned that into an office. Um, when we needed more room, we took a second storage nook, we put up another partition and turned that into an office. Um, and that does create some problems, you know, right now, my investigator is working behind a partition, so if a witness shows up at our office, uh, the most private place he has to meet with somebody is, is sort of behind a partition, but because of the openness of the space that we're in, uh, that conversation is gonna carry out into the lobby and, and carry into other places of the office. Um, recently, because of our staffing situation, uh, we were able to hire another lawyer, uh, but that meant that we needed more room. So I, um, effectively took a hallway and we put a computer in a hallway, um, and that's where I'm working right now. Um, so, uh, I've got lawyer's offices over here, I've got a hallway to my right, I'm in a hallway, um, such that in my conversations, there's no privacy they carry throughout the entire office. Um, and, and so really where we're at is we're packing now 13 people into this space designed for nine. I've got two people working behind cubicles, uh, in my own personal office. I, I don't even have a cubicle or a partition, it's like literally a desk in a hallway, um, and we don't have a break room or a conference room. And, um, I, I wanted to start a dialogue with the county because as, as much as we love the building and as much as we love the location, uh, we're sort of bursting at the seams. And, um, you know, right now, we don't have, um, really me working in a hallway is really not, as I, in my view, it's not really sustainable, um, because part of my job, time to time, I gotta have a sit-down, uh, talk with an employee, personnel issues come up. Um, you know, I can go to their office and do that, but if I'm gonna have a conversation with my boss in preparation for that meeting with the employee, that means I gotta go find somebody's office, shut the door, maybe throw them out of it, um, so I can have a private conversation, uh, with my boss. Um, you know, if I wanna have a private conversation, um, with a client, I can't do it in my existing workspace, and I have to go find an office somewhere, uh, to do it. Um, you know, when I'm sitting at my desk, the phone is behind me, so I pick up the phone. If anybody's walking through the hallway, they gotta dive under the phone cord, or if they got long legs like I do, they can jump over the phone cord. Um, you know, but it's really, it's not an ideal setup. Um, and I know, um, that, that the county is committed to, um, making sure everybody has the space that they need. I'd be happy to, to, um, you know, consider other locations. If you think there are other locations that you wanna put us, I, you know, we'd be open to some, um, you know, sort of novel solutions, um, you know, perpetually, so you can kinda keep your eye on the big picture. Perpetually, we're always asking the legislature for additional personnel. You know, right now, um, you know, we really don't have room for the people that we've got. Um, and so it's an issue. I don't wanna bring you all up to speed on sort of where we're at, so. Um, you know, I did, um, sort of in preparation for today, um, kinda asked around, I had the court martial take me up to the fourth floor of the courthouse, because I understand that place is, it's not really in use at this moment, apart from some storage. Great location. I don't know if the elevator reaches up to that top floor. Okay. Um, you know, and the, um, the Health Department, great building, um, you know, it's not, it's not a building where the judges could tell our clients, hey, you know, walk through the alley to go fill out the public defender application. Um, and typically for my clients, transportation's a real issue, so, um, I don't have a great answer, but I'd be happy to, uh, start talking with you about, uh, these things that we can come to a solution, so.
Okay. How often are you guys in other counties? I mean, obviously, you have to go visit your clients in other counties.
Pretty commonly, yeah. And so, um, you know, because we do serve Miller and Monatah Counties, um, you know, the lawyers that, that go to those counties, they have court there, they have, um, they have jail visits that they'll need to do. Um, and so right now, to kinda make do, when I need to have those closed-door conversations, I can generally find somebody else's office to go camp in. Um. Okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
May I speak?
Yeah.
I'm Kathy Lear, I'm the comptroller for the state public defender system. Um, you bring up, whatever the counties, do we provide representation for out of the Jefferson City location? And Miller and Monatah come to mind. By statute, those counties should provide some cost back to reimburse Cole County. It's based on a per-attache share based on population. So, uh, they should be helping pay for the public defender's office. I'm pretty sure they're getting a free ride right now, unless you're billing them, and I'm not aware of it.
We are.
Okay, good. Good, good, good. So the same thing could happen, you know, if you moved us, they should still be able to kick in their fair share based on population. We love the space we have. It's awesome. It's done upright, beautiful. It's just not big enough for what we have here and the, and the caseloads that Justin has. So lots of times when we have a vacancy, our rule for the state, we call it everybody in the pool. So every office, when there's a vacancy, say it's in West Plains, we look at every office's caseload to see where that vacancy can best serve the state. And occasionally, as Justin's office has grown, that's what's happened. Even though we may not get any additional FTE from the state, uh, Cole County has seen, has seen growth, and other counties have seen some decline. It's really something I'd like to fix. It's on my bucket list that the statute requires the counties to provide its space. For years and years and years, I have asked that the legislature pick up that cost, and it's, it's, in my opinion, it should be a state cost and not a county cost. Again, this year, the 2020 legislative budget request has that decision item back in it, so any support that we could have for that would take that burden off the counties. So that's where I am with it. I do this statewide. Like I said, I think Justin's face is awesome, it's just not big enough. It's, they're packed in there. So if you'd like a tour, I'm sure Justin would love to give you a tour.
I did, I toured it. It really is a beautiful building.
It's beautiful.
It's. Greg, I know we're using the basement for storage. Is there any way, I'm just looking at the building that's over there. Is there any way we could put offices down there?
The AC works downstairs, it was never replaced. Uh, there's some mold downstairs, which will have to be remediated. Uh, yeah, we're using it for surplus storage, plus we're using it for storing stuff from this building and the, and it's over there, too, because there isn't a storage in this building.
We were in the basement. That's where we came from. Um, and I'm not exaggerating, when we moved upstairs, I literally took bookshelves full of books and just tossed them in the dumpster because they were full of mold. Just fuzzy.
Okay. Well, uh, see what we can do.
Yeah.
I don't know if we can do that fourth floor. We emptied the fourth floor out just because of that reason. We did have a couple offices up there. It's not saying you can't go back up there, but I think we got a lot of the weight off that floor, and that was part of the concern.
And no elevator would be a concern for clients. Although we could have a meeting room down on a different floor that was accessible, that kinda sort of meets ideas.
You just put the new people up there.
Yeah, make them walk.
Yeah, they'll get their steps in up there on them.
Yeah.
It's a big area.
I mean, if, you can't, I guess we can't be picky right now, so if, if nothing else, if that's what it comes down to, it could be a temporary fix, but, so if the state keeps sending us more people, which I understand are backlogged anyway and they need to do, but it's unfunded.
Right.
At what point are?
I do have a, a space needs analysis that I prepared, kind of based on an old, uh, Office of Administration requirements for attorneys and, and support staff, and what type of space that that would require for the public defender's office here in Cole County. Um, I think, with the number of offices, um, providing one office for growth plus a conference room, the total comes out to right around 4,000 square feet, and that provides for some growth, one office growth plus. So, um, I can leave this. It is just a working, working document and nothing further, how we kinda start when we look for space.
Well, LV hadn't already spoken for the old library office over there, we could look at that, but.
Oh, we'll do, we'll get trailers from the high school after they get the new. We'll give you a trailer, we'll do our fifth courtroom in a trailer. Don't know where we'll put the trailers.
No.
We didn't have to take, uh, IT out of the absurd. We basically chose to do that, didn't we? So, I mean, that office space is usable.
The heating and air conditioning. The heating and air conditioning. Separate, we didn't want to replace that, too, plus the weight of those units that had.
Everybody in this place has their own little desk heater, anyway, and has open windows. We got the air conditioner running.
Don't you hate that?
I know Judge Joyce.
Don't get me started on that one. Wait, I got me started.
Judge Joyce was saying that could be a good place for the fifth courtroom, too, so she took me up there. It is a big space, but it's got lots of issues.
It's, you got a small area for the stairwell, you don't have, you don't have an ingress and egress, you just, you got one place if there was a problem, so it's really unsafe.
And, and, you know, when you're speaking of entry and exit of, of different offices, the, the elevator is awesome there because it provides access to our floor, but it also provides a way for bad guys to kinda sneak up there pretty easily. Um, I took the elevator up there this morning and I was standing there waiting for the receptionist to notice me, because she didn't hear me. I mean, I just came up the elevator and I'm standing there. If I was a bad guy, I could've done some damage.
We will see what we can do.
Is there anything you need from us?
For winning lottery numbers?
Exactly.
That'll build your ability.
I might even share.
When did y'all get your additional people? I mean, how, how soon are they gonna be adding? You say with room to grow one, but if y'all have grown four in the last year, are they gonna put four more in?
I don't, I don't think we're gonna get, in my wildest dreams, I don't think we're gonna get four more, you know, within a year, but.
If we would get something from the legislature, Cole County would be one of the first places to put staffing because of the waitlist that we've got going now.
So we're supposed to get another judge in, what, 2021?
2021, yeah.
But y'all are still gonna have to keep the same number of people, or?
Don't know that.
Right.
It depends on the legislature. We certainly have asked for more people. Uh, we've been successful in the last couple of years, so hopefully our success will continue that way. The quicker we can get them out of your jail, the faster, you save some money.
Right. I agree, I was thinking that, too, while I go. We'll get, let's get them.
Yeah.
Get this worked out and.
Yeah.
Get the administration part done. Y'all are in a tough spot because you're in the middle of it, okay.
Yeah. I'll leave this space needs analysis.
Okay.
It's, it's nothing other than a rough draft, um, a start, a starting point, a jumping off point.
How many square foot do you have up there right now? If you remember right offhand.
I actually have that with me.
Uh, it's not that big a deal, I was just curious. If you say we need 4,000, how far off are we, so?
I don't know. I can, I can get that information for you.
Okay.
And we can talk to some people, too, about the legislation going on, but Missouri don't have any money either, at least that's what they keep telling us, so.
If we could have support of the Missouri Association for counties for office space, that would be awesome.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Do you need that? Yeah, it's about half. What do you need?
There's about 2,000 up there.
Twenty-three, fifty-three, something like that, so.
That's what I was thinking.
It is, it is a beautiful building. But just, we'll move Chris Estes's office into the trailers and. Don't, I'm just kidding, just kidding.
Jesus.
Just kidding. Move him over with you, Larry. Okay.
I'm like the record to show I had nothing to do with that.
Yeah, no comment from eastern or western.
Discussion and renewal of 2019 Health Dental Life and Vision Insurance.
Mr. and Mrs. Kessel's, um, Wall Street came, um, last week, and they talked about that you guys renew the self, uh, stop-loss coverage with Sunlight. This time for the annual renewal for the Health Dental Life Vision. I'm gonna ask you to renew with, um, Sunlight Financial with the dental, vision, life. There's no rate change, there's a hold on it because we had a whole, a two-year guarantee. So, do you have any questions about that, or if you wanna go ahead and vote on that part of it first? Get that out there.
So, what, what's the other part that we need to vote on?
The other part is the health insurance.
Okay.
And the only question you guys were thinking or talking about was dependent coverage.
Okay. And, and the rates, right?
And the rates, um, didn't change very much, so I was on the employees' part and I'm the family coverage, and that did change more, so I would still suggest you change it unless you wanted to do something with dependent. It's not worth changing if you don't, um, because it does increase some, but it does lower the employees'. It's not worth changing if you don't, because it does increase some, but it does lower the employee's part by five dollars. That we pay. The employee doesn't pay. I say that.
I mean, I would like to see us do something with the dependent coverage. I don't know if doing it right now is the right thing. I mean, if we leave it as is, but I mean, I think it's something that we need to continue to explore. But I mean, it's not a benefit to everybody, so.
I think probably for this year, we're, we probably need to just keep it as it is. But we need, we need to start looking at it earlier maybe to see if we can be creative.
We can. It's hard part to get the, what the year is, how it's looking, what the renewals would be till about this point in the year. I mean, we can try. The big question is, we just don't know how many people would jump on or jump off the policy if you did increase it more.
Right.
And that cost would then be given to the county.
I think somewhere down the road, if we can have a nurse practitioner over at Health, that could be more of a benefit for families. I don't know how we do it, but we, I mean, it's just.
You could, you could do it and pay for it out of the health insurance fund.
I think that could, that could be a significant savings.
I mean, it could save county employees from that second, that reinsurance cost or those bills that you get. I mean, we could absorb those costs if people would use it versus going to Cap Region or St. Mary's or whatever. We just pay for the whole cost right there. Now, if we could charge other people for those services, that could help offset the cost of that nurse practitioner. So whether that's a $20 visit or, or whatever it may be. So I know there's probably some other issues that we'd have to work out and how much we would charge people that I think would be a benefit to a lot of, a lot of people and I think it could almost pay for itself.
I do too. I really do. I think.
Kristen's looking at me like I'm crazy.
Yeah. Yeah, so if county and city could both utilize it and then also some of your clients and things like that, I think it, because most of the time when you go, you know, to a doctor, you've got cold or you've got the flu or you've got something, which is like, that's, you know, that's perfect for a nurse practitioner. You got a broken arm, go, go to the emergency room.
Want to make any changes or?
No, I'm fine living it same and the family thing, I'm just not for making any changes yet right now. I understand where it would take some, take some heat off some families. I don't know how many would actually sign up for it though or how much of a change we would have to make, so. And then what it would do to everybody else's individual policies if, you know, went up because of that. So I'm fine just leaving it alone right now.
Okay, so what'd you need first?
You can put them all together if you want. Don't change them. Just renew with Sun Life for the ancillary policies and then the health insurance remain the same with UMR.
Okay. So I move that we renew with Sun Life for the ancillary policies and with UMR for the health insurance.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. That covered?
Yep. And we'll get out notices and email and, sort of, so.
Okay. Change order for bid number 2018-32, elimination of framing drywall partition in hallway.
From what I understand, there was some miscommunication, misunderstanding between relocating a doorway and moving a doorway. And so that cost was not calculated in. So this represents, I guess, not adding another doorway or?
So it's a deduct.
Oh, yeah, that could be useful. A deduct of $550.96.
Okay.
So they didn't do it. It was specified to be done, so now we're just taking it off there and it's not going to be done.
Yeah, go ahead, Greg.
Originally, the door was supposed to be an added door and not relocate the door. Somehow we got switched up between the first bid and the second bid to relocate the door and to relocate, the door was not really serving a good purpose. So I just totally believe it was that.
So bottom line, everybody's happy and it costs less.
Yes.
That's all I need.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff. That was good.
I'm good with it. I was trying to figure out, Greg, sorry, I followed some emails along. I didn't understand exactly what was going on.
Well, the, originally the, the door was supposed to be closer to the main hallway so that the bathroom, so the toilet and sink and the shower was all taken all together. Yeah, so, but I mean, it, it'll be fine, won't it? I move that we approve and sign change order number one, I guess.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All systems warranty activation for door access control at the new Health Department.
Talked to Christie and might have been a bumpy road getting there, but everything's functioning as it should. So this is just the signing of the warranty.
I move that we sign the all systems warranty activation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do we want to do the budget discussion before we go into closed session or?
Doesn't matter. I just was trying to let people who didn't want to be.
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and?
Do what?
And do the budget discussion. Yeah.
That's going to take a while.
It's going to take.
Well, we got a lot of people. Okay. How long? We got?
Uh, we got, yeah.
Three, three closed sessions.
I don't think the closed sessions will take all that long.
Okay.
Who, I mean, who's all here for budget? You just want us to call you?
We're talking about EMS. Oh. I didn't even talk about EMS.
Contract should take long.
Yeah. Yeah, you can't stay either, Wheeler. No, if you stay, we'll just start deducting your budget for EMS. We're going to take, we're going to take from his and give it to you.
Okay, well.
That's just if he asks questions.
So if you have, if you want to do something in the closed first, you can. The budget discussion is going to take a little while.
Okay, then we will do closed. Everybody.
Hang on.
Okay, yeah.
All right, I move we go into closed session pursuant to section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri for real estate, sub two, personnel, sub 13, and contracts, sub 12.
Second.
Roll call.
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Uh, let's do, uh.
Uh, that's not very nice.
What?
Are y'all dumb?
I'm sexy.
Four minutes.
She did. She just said if you needed her to take a motion to tell her to come back over.
If we get emotional, we're supposed to call her.
You're going to get emotional.
Let's get us some shirts. We should get commissioner shirts like that. Great big on the back, says Aim Air. Put a Target on back of it too.
I would say.
I'll make something for you.
Made in Bantam.
And then we'll buy rubber knives and we'll just throw them.
You're not going to have to order these.
As long as they're rubber.
We need, because we still have time for our stuff.
They seem all heavy.
They're in a box for five hundred.
Just good material, I guess, huh?
All polyester.
Stretch. Rust fat people.
Like it?
Hey, I'm not the one really has to like it. Dollar runs on Africa.
Holder on the sleeve and then the.
Yep, sir. It's got the knife holder here.
The knife holder.
Up here. Pin holder's there.
Cool. On gun.
Is that just one of them or?
Can we help you, sir? Hey, we're not talking about your budget. Just so you know.
You don't care.
Just turn it on. Thanks for the notes. Go ahead.
All right. Hey, you got any special occasions come up? Got a gift for you.
Good looking.
Okay, so.
Maybe that we transfer a half million from the sheriff's budget.
I kind of need some guidance on where you want to go and what you want to see.
For what?
Max budget.
Uh, we need to see increased revenue. So do we have increased revenue?
You do not yet.
I do not yet.
Can you put that in there?
Can I put it in there?
Oh, yeah.
Not until you show me you're going to bring in more revenue?
I don't know why you're making all these rules all of a sudden.
You ate your Wheaties today, man.
Somebody give him a sticker.
Right, so. Right now, if you take out transfers in, cash forward.
Yeah, go get the bourbon.
That does sound good. I took my bottle home though. You got? Oh, I got.
Motion stock.
Got the emergency.
Pay attention.
Huh?
Okay.
So right now, we have a deficit of 1,899,183 with current salary, no transfer in, no cash forward, no contingent.
That's pretty close.
So basic revenue and expense is 1,899,183.
I was hoping those were variance.
That is no additional people beyond what we currently have. So I need some guidance from you all. One, I don't think we have the budget to add person out, but is there someone or some position that you want to see in here?
You have all the staff.
Be good.
For.
I thought they were asking you.
I'm asking anybody that wants to talk.
So I don't.
No.
I don't think that we need to add personnel. The only ones that we would maybe consider doing are those floats to try to reduce the overtime we're paying out. But I think that's something that we probably, and I don't have really the figures on that is, is what, where that breaking point is, where we're paying more in overtime versus what it would cost us for a full-time employee and their health insurance, et cetera. So there, there's a tipping point there, kind of like right of bell curve where they're, they're cost effective. They're not cost effective. They become cost effective and then they don't become cost effective. So I don't know where in that curve that is. That's probably something that you and I can sit down and probably do a little bit more on.
Yeah.
But one of the concerns when looking at that is, is we haven't been able to track unscheduled overtime up to this point. And so we're working on that. By not being able to track, track that unscheduled overtime, overtime that they're not built into their schedule, that's where it's hard for us to judge where that, where that bell curve really sits. So I don't think that there's anything right now. The only thing that would become an issue, but I think we would come back at that point would be, is if this Mizzou purchase of St. Mary's goes through in this next fiscal year, we're going to see an increase in transfers between Cap Region and St. Mary's just because they're going to not offer the same services at both hospitals completely. So we'll see an increase in revenue, but we may need to come back and ask for some people to staff up another transfer truck or something along those lines. But that's if that goes through. I don't suspect it'll go through this file, this budget year. I think it'll be the one after, but that is something that we need to keep in our minds. As far as adding additional trucks, I think right now we're doing a pretty good job. We've only gone to status zero, I believe it's twice, in about the last six to eight weeks. I get paged when that happens. Before, we were doing it almost nightly. So the changes we've made have made some impact. So I don't, I don't see a reason to add anyone right now.
So no floats, no added people in dispatch.
So those have already been done. So we'd like to, right, so the whole dispatch thing, I think, is a conversation of.
You're recording.
I was.
The dispatch thing right now is, is right, we've got those eight people, right, that we, we put those extra two on. I don't think that we need to do anything with that. We still got to get them trained up. We need to decide what we're really doing with that whole dispatching anyway. And so I don't want to, I don't think now's the time to go for that. Should we be a horizontal dispatch system? Yes, we should. We are a vertical dispatch system and we won't be able to be horizontal unless we add people. But I don't think our budget supports that at this point. So ideally, we would be horizontal, but I'm realistic to the fact that the budget, I don't think will allow us to do that yet. So staying vertical, I think we can maintain for right now. Let's see if we can get some more increases in revenue coming in to help support that or other options completely. The floats, again, those floats, so there's, there's that bell curve I talked about. There's also a morale part of that is right now, anytime someone takes off, someone has to work overtime. It's not an option. If you have those floats built into the system, then that overtime, like we're not forcing people or we're not asking people to work overtime. We have somebody on the schedule that's there to plug in automatically. Again, so there's a morale issue there that we don't have somebody to cover, that we ultimately could end up mandating someone to work. So yes, that's important from a morale side, but I don't know the cost benefit of it because I can't track unscheduled overtime yet. So I don't know. I can tell you on average, we have at least one off a day. A lot of times, depending on what time of the year it is, it's two people off and it doesn't include people calling in sick. So can I gainfully employ at least one float a day? Yeah, I'm pretty sure I can. But again, I don't know if the cost is good yet or not, or however you like to word that. I don't know if that makes sense to you, but I'd like to sit down and try to figure out where that cost benefit is.
Well, so if you're not paying somebody regular time, you're paying overtime. So obviously, that's a reduction in costs.
Right.
Not necessarily because you got to figure another employee's benefits in there.
I haven't put, I haven't put it down on paper. Like you said, we're having a hard time tracking.
But there is the break even line. And I'm fine with giving them the opportunity to make more money and work overtime, so.
Right, if they want to, but.
So I guess my question at this point is, could you schedule part timers on a regular basis to see if that helps you or doesn't?
So the problem we have with part timers is that they are, my belief is, is part timers can be very good for a system and part timers cannot be good for a system. And the reason why is part timers, they're really per diem, not really part timer. And I could schedule somebody to work, okay, eight, every Monday you're working. But the problem is that that Monday, I don't really have openings. Now I have someone on the schedule that I shouldn't really have on the schedule. We have a decent amount of part-time employees on, like in the pool. Getting them to work is a different story. Some of them work a ton of hours legitimately. Some of them don't work as much. The good part is the ones that haven't been working, we've tried to separate after a certain point in time. We give them a warning normally, unless they're just not working at all. And then there's no reason to continue to keep them. So I think we can. The thing is, is they do have a higher hourly rate as well, so to entice them to work. So I do think that it costs us more money to use full-time staff than it would be to have a float, but I can't tell you that definitively because we can't track those hours yet. So we're working on a way to track them.
And a float would be a paramedic?
Yes, sir, it would always be a paramedic because I can put them in either spot.
But one wouldn't get you someone every day either.
It would be one per shift. So it'd be a total of three, one per shift.
Three additional people, I don't think we can do it at the moment. Now, if your revenue goes up, I think it's a conversation to have again, but I don't know at this point that you can sustain a three additional paramedics.
Right, but I mean, you got to think that your overtime's going to go down too.
Show me. Because.
And philosophy.
Right now, I'm, I'm not getting there.
So something I would think that we maybe could do is let's revisit this maybe mid-year and say, okay, hey, are, where's our revenue at? And where are we, where are we looking at in overtime? We should be able to then hopefully be able to start tracking that unscheduled overtime and have some, some good data to be able to prove or disprove that thought. So I would say if we can. So, I would say, if we can agree that, hey, mid-year, we'll come back if we need to, um, versus, you know, doing it right now. Let's, let's try to do this the.
Okay.
Smart way, I guess.
Okay, so, I'll go through some, I did take some fairly large cuts from your budget. Let's see if we can live without or not. Um, Avesta Employment Services, I took out.
Yep, that's fine. So, the only thing with that one was the one that were the, the drug testing, background checks, things like that. So, um, we do need to be doing those. Um, we can try to, probably try to find a different avenue to do, so.
Um, then, fire station rent, I took out the additional station. I think we can add it back in if you find somewhere to rent from, but right now, the additional station on the east, I took that rent payment out because we don't currently have somewhere in mind or somewhere for sure.
So, we've been looking at a place, we just need to figure out if that's where we wanna go.
So, I think that one's a discussion to continue on. If we find someplace, we may need to add it back in, but right now, it's only for the stations that we're currently renting.
Okay.
Um. I'm not sure why we had such a large increase in the auto insurance. I dropped it back to close, I think I did a two or three percent increase from what you paid last year.
Um, I think that that was based on additional units in the system, so.
Um, that one, we may need to discuss a little more, cause I don't really know if twenty-four is where we should be or not be, but, um, that one's kind of a moving target based on what vehicles we add and when we add them.
And I think we could probably put it, we could probably put it back to where it was and then just know that if we, we may need to come back and say, hey, this is gonna go up based on the number of units we have.
Medical supplies, I've kinda backed off a little bit. I gave you, I think, a ten percent increase over where we projected you to be this year.
So, that one, that one, I think we probably need to discuss more than, because there's going to be some stuff from a medical standpoint. So, I'll give you an example is the capnography. Capnography is, what we use capnography for is to tell us how adequately someone's breathing or not, right? So, we measure those things. Anytime a patient is given pain medication, is having respiratory difficulties, any type of asthmatics types of stuff, um, congestive heart failure, uh, unconscious, cardiac arrest, all of those scenarios. The gold standard in patient care is to have that capnography put on that patient so that we can see the waveform, if we're adequately ventilating that patient or not, or if the patient is adequately ventilating themselves. Right now, that's not what's taking place, and so, those cost money. So, those are expensive disposable items that we need to do in order to meet that standard.
And we're not currently.
We're not.
Any of it.
Um, so cardiac arrests, they are, but the rest of them, they're not. And so, really, when you're giving pain medications, your liability greatly increases that if we were to give pain medications and then the patient goes into some type of respiratory depression, respiratory arrest, and it was not identified. Um, or an asthmatic that starts having problems and we, the waveform looks differently. If they're not noticing that because they don't have it on the patient, you're behind the eight ball, and now, from a clinical standard, you are not meeting that. So, I think that that's something that we need to make sure. So, I think we can potentially back off the two-ten, but I think one-ninety to one-ninety-five is a target we need to be at. Because right now, we are, I looked yesterday, I wanna say we're at about ninety percent to budget-ish right now, and that's not including those items. So, I would be concerned dropping that a lot.
She's at one-ninety-five.
Well, I'm at one-ninety-five, one-ten.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the one-seventy-seven.
Nope.
My bad.
One-seventy-seven's where I'm projecting you to be at the end of this year.
Okay.
So, then, one-ninety-five would give you a ten percent increase over that.
Okay, so, I'd like to keep that at two-ten. Hopefully, we don't get to that part, and then we can shift that to the following year if we needed to, but not having it in there and then needing it would concern me. Just because if we're already projected to be, we were given one-fifty-five, and we're projected to be twenty thousand over that, twenty-two thousand over that now, and we haven't implemented that standard yet, that would concern me.
Well, I guess I figured the one-seventy-seven this year included a lot of the items that you've restocked on the trucks that hopefully, going forward, is not all going to be done at the same time. But, that was just my assumption.
That's hopeful.
But, two-ten is.
Just trying to set bottom figure up.
Uh-huh.
Right.
I'm trying to get to a good number here so we can go to the sales tax side and kinda see what we have to play with over there, so, um.
So, is any of that billable?
Yeah, so we don't, so back in two thousand and ten is when, uh, C, C, uh, Centers for Medicare stopped doing, where you basically outlined what you used on, on a call. It's basically a flat fee. Now, in eighteen months, this is all gonna change again, and that's something that actually you and I are gonna have to sit down and talk about, is now, we're gonna have to start doing a completely different billing process, and we're gonna have to meet certain standards and different, like, it, it's a big change. And so, um, this is going to become more difficult for billing, but potentially increase revenue, but it's going to become a much more involved process than just submitting a bill. So, um, and that's something we can talk about, but that, that'll affect next budget year, not this one. But they are not billable.
Leave it at one-ninety-five and.
Put a question mark there and let, uh, we gotta start somewhere. And the reason that I'm there is that we're at one-nine and the deficit already, sales taxes is gonna bring in two-point-six, so you're gonna have seven hundred thousand there to spend on, uh, capital.
Okay.
Unless you dip into the reserves.
So, next big cut was to meetings. I dropped the number of people that you were taking to the meetings down by one or two. So, like EMS today, I think I dropped one percent. MEMS conference, I dropped to two instead of four.
So, MEMS, I would like to keep up just because it's the Missouri one, and we need to be good stewards in Missouri to that, uh, to them, because there's a lot of things that Missouri will be changing from law standpoints that get brought up there. Um, it's a way to get the command staff in there to start, um, reaching outside their little enclave and learning best practices from other places in the state. So, I would rather see MEMS go up, and then if we want, we can, um, we can pull at one of the EMS todays, like, we can cut one of them and drop another person onto that one to keep MEMS in there. MEMS, I think, would be important for them, for the staff.
So, can the, can the total stay where it's at? Fifteen for the total and?
And we can adjust around that.
Right.
Yep, we could do that.
Okay, um. Then. Education, your people going to training to be paramedic came out completely.
So.
God love me.
Um, there's two ways to look at this. Um, we're spending a lot of money recruiting, trying to find, it's only going to increase, right? If you have people leaving or, right, you're always gonna have a turnover rate, fifteen percent to twenty-four percent is an average nationally of the turnover rate. Um, ideally, we wanna be at fifteen percent or less. Um, the way I would look at this is, is that if I can get and reimburse, maybe not pay for it upfront, but if a medic comes, if somebody goes to medic school, hands me a medic certificate, a license, and says, hey, I'm a medic now, I'd like to stay here working. We reimburse them for an agreement to work for us for three years, right? Something along those lines, right? If I can keep them gainfully employed for three years, that is a well-founded cost benefit to the department. I'm not spending extra money on uniforms, I'm not spending extra money on recruitment, training money, like, all of those costs associated with onboarding a new employee. So, the other thing is, I think that if we can encourage our staff that are EMTs to continue their education to help us, it only makes us better. My personal opinion is if we do three a year, um, I don't think that that's. Un, unwise.
So, that also included your leadership class for three people?
Um, so, we've kinda talked about that, that trying to get our supervisors trained up to the proper level, uh, is important because morale is affected not by upper management, it's affected by middle management. Um, organizational leadership books will tell you that all the time, that, um, a strong middle management is what will ultimately make or break a department, uh, any organization really. So, I would like to get them into that train, uh, training class, it's a one-time cost. Um, it's not a reoccurring cost to keep them, you know, to go through that class and to get them trained up. I'm gonna leave this one up to you guys, what you guys wanna do as far as your opinions on that, the.
So, it's seven thousand apiece for paramedic school reimbursement? And then it was five thousand and something for leadership class?
Right.
We could stagger.
See, I'd like to keep that, I don't know where we can, if we can, if we could take it from somewhere else, I think.
I've had five employees in the last month come up that are EMTs, asking if the county would reimburse them for paramedic school, they would go. Um, I, I think, I've got three right now in class that are getting ready to graduate December to March timeframe, that if we can get them to stay, um, as medics, I think that's really helpful as well. So, and maybe one of the ways that we don't, not to do the floats right away, is, is that if a paramedic, if an EMT comes and gives me a paramedic license, we upgrade them into that new salary. It doesn't, cause right now, right, they're locked in, so right here in an EMT spot, we need to be willing to upgrade them individuals. That gives us more paramedics to fill either roles in that overtime role so they can move within the system more easily. So, that's maybe a way to avoid putting those extra three on, because now we have more people that can work those slots voluntarily.
You're talking about double paramedic crews? I mean, I think, we decide on this one later. I mean, obviously, I think maybe it's important, but, you know, we gotta just prioritize, you know?
Well, so keep that one in mind, it's currently out.
Thirty-seven thousand there.
I think then there would have to be stipulations on that too.
Right.
I mean, cause we did have that in our first time I handled before, paying for education, but again, it became too expensive for the county, and it also was, as soon as they reached their time limit, they were gone. So, we paid their education and then were gone.
So, we kinda dropped fees back some, cause we're talking about rebidding your billing company. Um, I don't know if that one needs to go back up or not. You know, we've kinda gone back and forth with that number, but right now, it's down to the two-twenty from the two-forty, so if we need to bump that figure back up.
I think we should, I think that we should be okay. I, I suspect that this is probably gonna come in at four and a half to five, um, percent. So, I think that, I don't think our fees are going to be nearly what they are right now. So, that's, that's, I've done some preliminary, just calling around, asking what kind of fees we should be expecting, and I've heard between four and five would be, probably be a good target range.
Okay, so, this fund has some variation depending on where his cash forward comes in at, what the actual amount that he needs in transfer for next year. It could be less than the one-eight-nine-nine, but let's use that one-eight-nine-nine to, cause we're assuming going forward, that's where we're going to be close to.
Right.
Um, let's use that in the other budget and see where we're at.
Michael, we're just talking about EMS today, so I don't know if you're here to talk about your budget or.
No, he's here for, he's here for lunch.
No.
He's here for lunch.
That's the only reason I'm here.
I do, I do. He's just punctual early.
Come on. Why won't it get me in that field? Oh, because I'm in Sineden SU. I got Sineden SU. So, again, no cash forward, no contingency. I do have the two ambulances, so say we did two ambulances a year in there, we're a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in the hole with no capital.
So, you got the nine-one-one in there, you got first responders?
Yep. Tax increment financing you have to pay, it's the TIF stuff onto tax collections. Transfer fund does have an administrative fee and a lease payment for Bill Farr's side of the building. Um, we could talk about those, they both will affect general fund's budget, cause that's where that transfer goes to.
We'll talk later.
Well, the increase, I mean, they got more room and doors are open a lot, so HVAC's up pretty high now. Notice you're keeping from doing this. Did that hurt? Did that hurt your face, sir?
At least not here, right?
Oh, man, you can't let us know that something bugs you, cause this is just like, poke, poke.
So, you got a hundred and fifty-two thousand in the hole.
So, let, let's play the game. So, there's where you are with the total transfer that's needed in their fund. This is what their budget would look similar to going into next year, uh, the following year. We do right now have a fairly decent reserve, so if you put that reserve in there, we have some room to do some stuff. We have room to do it, but keep in the back of your mind, if his operating budget stays where it is or grows, you're going to eat up that cash forward with just his regular oper- operations going forward.
So, uh, walk me through this here just a little bit. I see the cash forward that you put in there, but where's the, where's the transfer? I mean, is the rollback in the transfer fund?
It's all in the transfer fund, yes. So, when you go into this transfer fund, you see the transfer to general fund, which is the sixty percent rollback.
Okay, three-point-eight.
You see the one-point-eight that's transferred into his operating budget to balance it, then that administrative fee and the lease payment.
Okay.
So, when you take down reserves, you know, it's a one-time purpose for capital, it's a lot different than increasing, uh, operations work, cause that never goes down. So, I don't know what would go down besides laying people off.
Right. So, you got the ambulances in there, and it only took reserves down a hundred and fifty-two thousand, right?
Well, so, I had the ambulances in there before any reserves, so yes.
Right.
With just the ambulances, yes, we would have a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar deficit.
Right.
And then with the two ambulances?
What'd you say, is that just two ambulances? What'd you say, is that just two ambulances?
We'll talk about that.
So, kind of, the point today is kind of show you where we're at with the operating side and why we're making some fairly decent cuts to it. And two, so that you can look through the capital list that's currently in here and maybe prioritize and decide for sure what items you want to do now. Maybe are there items that we wanna hold off on a little bit and save that reserve? And see if we can stabilize their operating with additional revenue before we spend one point eight or more, cause this does not include your, uh, radio.
I just submitted seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of grant requests today.
And that would make a huge difference as well.
So like you're resolved, so we're not doing that, or?
No, so that would drop down to about thirty-five to forty thousand, so we can cut that down, um, cause we've come up with a different thing. Right, we still have to come up with a event process, but they don't have to be those other ones. Um, the pickup, we're very well prepared to pull out right now, so we can take that out. The, I think we can, we came up with that list. We were able to get painfully, I'll, I'll tell you that, we were able to get down the capital to just under a million dollars by making cuts that we went through. Now some of that is kicking the can down the road, like, we know that, right? At some point, we're gonna have to do these things.
Was that a million with the ambulances?
I knew you were gonna ask me that, I don't remember. Wasn't, was that without? Uh, let me look, I might have that in here. Yeah, it might have been. Sorry, I have a connectivity problem, so I can't pull it up.
So it takes your capital down to?
Well, so if he can get his capital down to a million from one point eight, I'm just showing you what it would do. So if I plug his cash forward in where we think it's going to be, take his capital improvements to a million, that leaves you a little over two to carry forward.
Right.
Our contingency.
That's, that, that's a million dollars in capital plus the ambulances.
Yes, that's what it's showing you right now.
I think one of the things that we need to do today is, I mean, obviously Matt needs to work on his capital and where he can trim, but if we're gonna do two ambulances, we need to give him some kind of indication that we are gonna buy two ambulances so he can get in the list, on the list.
So, the way that works is, is if we're gonna do that, um, so Ford or whoever, right, whatever we're gonna do only goes, uh, they only make ambulances, like the chassis for six weeks a year. And when they're gone, they're gone. And we need to get into the production order, so if we give them indication that we're going to purchase two ambulances, then they will basically buy the chassis and put us in the production cycle. We can cut down from six-month build time to a three-month build time, uh, by doing that. So, we could theoretically assume we had it all specked out here in the next thirty days. By February first, we could probably have them online and in possession. So, um, it, that is absolutely ideal, that if we can get known approval, and so we would sign a letter of intent, um, and then that's what would kick that, that process off, so.
So, is that the number, uh, four-sixty-five for two, is that totally outfitted, or?
So-
We talked about that at one time.
So the two, so it's two-thirty-five apiece, right? Um, so, two-thirty-five apiece puts, um, stretchers, the lifting system, and the ambulances in there, that's it.
So I had one at two-thirty and one at two-thirty-five?
So the one at two-thirty-five, um, so those were, those were, that's the other side of it, is, is if we sign now, right, we should see less of an increase than if we sign after the first of the year, because they wanna say they go on a calendar year for their markup processes. That's beginning of the year, so I, I have not reached out and gotten the this month price type thing. So, I think if we say two-thirty-five apiece, that's, is a safe numbers. Um, the idea is, is right, we'll try to get it as low as we possibly can.
So that changes that slightly? So that changes the one-fifty-two figure as well?
In our budget, we requested, or in our grant request, we requested a bariatric ambulance. So that should help for our morbidly obese patients.
How does that work on those, uh, grants? I mean, obviously, if it's already in the works, will they still reimburse for that, or?
No, so you can't, you can't purchase for that, but that would be a separate thing, because of a bariatric ambulance, while it can be used daily in operations, you really don't want to, because that's one of those that you, you run out on the ones that, you know, like, we have, we have a patient that we transfer on a routine basis, average twice a week?
On average.
On average, twice a week, that is over seven hundred pounds. So, right, we're, that's a ticking time bomb for shoulder injuries or complaints. So the idea would be is just to maximize that truck's availability. The other side of that is, we've written it as a regional asset. Um, regional assets are more likely to be approved by FEMA, uh, during the grant process. So we would do automatic aid, make that available to Missouri. For us, right, we're the transporting agency, and we can be reimbursed for that. Um, but, so we wouldn't want that truck deployed as a full-time unit. It would be a truck that if we knew we had something going on, time chief can take it there, the crew can come pick it up, whatever, whatever that process is. That depending on what that call is, it also helps with transfers as well for those patients, cause it has a special stretcher in it as well. So, like, that truck would be dedicated to morbidly obese.
And the grant would pay for it in full?
Uh, ten percent match is all you have to do. So, I, again, I don't know if we'll get it, but we're, uh, we just, my staff specifically did some very hard work on those grants, so we're, we're hopeful. I think our best bet of getting any of the stuff we requested is probably the radios.
Come on, yeah, it's just Matt. Sorry, Matt, you set yourself up for those lots of-
That's alright, it's all good.
So I guess my, my request at this point is, I need a revised capital list of what the priorities are for next year and where we want that capital number to be.
But we got two requests, your request, and then we need to let him know if he needs to go on the list, right?
If you guys are gonna approve the ambulances, like, you know you're gonna do that, then if we do it now, then I can start working it.
Not, not signing a contract, but just letting you know that when you're good with that. Maybe we don't have to cover that, right?
Unless you're, if you're signing a-
It would be a letter of intent.
Yes, if you're signing a letter of intent, yes. I mean, we do have the money in contingency at the moment, and that would remove the additional funding from next year, so it would just literally be moving it from contingency now to put it in the budget this year, and then leaving it in there for next year.
Okay.
So if we leave them in there, and you gotta reduce it or cut somewhere, you'll just cut something else, correct?
I have to have anything else, it's not really an option.
Okay.
I think we need to do that.
I'm, I'm fine with that, I agree.
So, we need to get that going, and then I think we just need to come up with a number that, some type of a number for Matt to work within, in the other capital, I mean, obviously.
I mean, it can be done two ways, we can give him the number to work backwards from, or he can give us a list and have him number one through whatever his priorities, and we can, you know, figure out.
Right.
So I would, I would ideally like the number, and then try to see what I can maximize in there.
Okay.
That, that, for me, worked best at my last agency, cause we were able to go to the vendors and try to use that as leverage.
So it's just whatever you're comfortable with, I mean, right now, we're at three point two million dollars in cash. And, you know, we got a hundred and fifty-two, well, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar deficit. And so, whatever you're comfortable with taking that cash down to is basically what you're talking about. So, if you put a million in there, you're gonna be almost a little over two. But if you put a half a million in there, you're gonna be at two and a half, so, we're just spending our cash, is all we're doing. Obviously, if Matt can get rev- if Matt can get revenue up, then, then that'll decrease that as well, so.
Well, I'm just kinda wanting to slow down on it a little bit. We spent a lot in the last several years, so, we wanna keep it healthy.
So you got a number in mind, or so?
Seven.
Seven hundred?
No, seven. No, I, I wasn't really prepared for this, so I don't, I just randomly picked a number there, is all that was.
Well, so you could work it backwards as well, so if you wanted to
Well, I mean, you're assuming that sales tax will stay flat.
Yep.
You're assuming no increase in revenue.
So if you wanted your contingency to be at two-five is where you want your cash to be? Not twenty-five?
Jesus.
You can make it-
Keep on going.
I don't like the laptop.
Matt's eyes are getting bigger and bigger.
I know, keep that up.
Zero, 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 more commas, more commas.
I mean, you can work it backwards and say he only gets five hundred and forty-eight thousand, two-nineteen, if you want the contingency to be at two-five.
I mean, that's a starting point. I don't mind having a little extra in there, sitting there in case you come across something next year that they say, well, it's a one-time deal, and we need to jump on this. Cause there's nothing in EMS that doesn't have a bunch of zeros and commas.
You're part of healthcare, it's the most expensive industry in-
Yep, I didn't, no, I didn't mean that as an insult, I just meant it's I mean, public works got some expensive equipment too, I'm not gonna let you suffer alone, we'll throw them to-
So you're now your consultant, Larry.
Oh, wait, wait, we're not even gonna start with IT, that you have nothing that you can touch or feel that costs a lot of money.
I'm with you there.
Hello, hey, we can get this stuff in space for you for a million dollars.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
So, ideas, where you wanna be? So we can at least give Matt some direction to get back to us with an estimated list of the items that he wants in here?
So we asked for one-eight, we can come in around nine. I think we can, well, we try to make that, like, that was a number that we got close to by making cuts. Him and I went over, like, two weeks ago. We spent four hours on the phone trying to revise this number down to things that truly what could we kick the can down to, and what couldn't? And that was the number we consistently came back to. Unfortunately, there were things that were purchased that were not either appropriate or are now end of life cycle or failing, and we've gotta fix it.
I mean, for me, you know, if you spend it next year, it's going in the right direction, but then you just get to spend less than next year, I mean, so.
Well, that would be the idea.
I mean, we're gonna have to build up the fund, or we gotta do something different at some point, otherwise we'll just run out of cash. But, I mean, if you can increase revenues, you know, that offsets some of that too.
Just remember that your operating fund is mainly personnel, so any changes you guys make to personnel has a huge effect on their budget.
I mean, we're not making a decision on this today, we're just trying to-
No, we're just trying to give me a place that we're trying to get to, and that kinda leads me back to Matt and getting some sort of list from him of what items we think we can cut out and what we can't. So really, we're just looking for some direction to get the budget where we want it to be.
It's Halloween next week.
Yes.
There you go, some candy ordered.
So, I mean, obviously, this is just the capital, I mean, we still didn't fix the thirty-seven thousand in there for education and training.
No, so, that, this is-
And what else was in there? You wanted two-ten for medical supplies?
So the two that, yeah, the two that we really talked about was medical supplies and education, were the two items where I think you gave me some indication that maybe I cut a little too much.
I'd, I'd really like to see education in there, but-
It just creates more of a deficit.
Right.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I would really like to see us cut out a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, but I don't think that's gonna happen.
I got a red pen. We can make it happen.
I guess.
I'm good with starting there, I mean, see where it's at.
Man, it's, yeah, I mean, it's not anything in stone there, it gives something to work towards.
Okay.
Education thing, we still can kick that around too, um, I'd really like to do it, but it ain't, it's not something that we have to have. It'd sure be nice if I'll be able to do that. What else did we have, is that it?
Medical supplies was the other one we talked about, a hundred and ninety-five to two-hundred-and-ten.
Yeah, I forgot about that one.
I'll just-
I don't have any good ideas on that one.
Well, it's like anything has to do with medicine, it's just-
It's not like you guys-
Our call volume's only gonna keep increasing.
It's not gonna get, it's not gonna be cheap.
Our call volume's increasing at a six to ten percent increase, and-
I'm gonna invent like reusable gauze or something, so you can wash that stuff out, Band-Aids or something, then.
But can you get us that on that, because we, we've heard that before you were here, that our call volume was increasing, it's like, well, where's the extra money? Cause it never shows up.
There are some changes that we're in the process of making to prepare for-
I'm not blaming you.
We had some billing that wasn't, we had some things that weren't billed, too.
You're averaging between twenty and thirty-five trips a month that are not billed.
Yeah, that's, that's-
Because they're not completed. And that's a software issue, so that goes back to that, that we've been paying to use for that software that was never implemented. We're in the process of that implementation process right now, and so that will help realize that, I mean, we're not gonna bring another million dollars, and that's not realistic.
Right.
I think that realistically, a couple hundred thousand, you can-
Yeah, just close the, close the session, yeah, yeah.
He needs some lunch.
Should he go to the bathroom?
Okay, I maybe we stay in recess till four-thirty.
Second.
Olive favor.
At least, at least you're laughing with us.
Not the bitchy Jeff, the bitchy hungry Jeff?
Hey, it's the one.
It's what?
It's the one.
Kill. They know me.